Thank you for joining us on the second segment of Good Morning Anambra this morning on the discussion segments. My name is Ajuli Chupu Okawue.
I'm Ijamauche, welcome.
Yeah, a nation cannot do without the legal binding constitution. And then Nigeria, over the years, we've been talking so much about the constitution, its inadequacies, its loopholes, and in some cases, they said that the constitution should be properly reviewed so that it bears the entity of citizenry and then what will make you be proud to call yourself a true Nigerian? Because what we call or what we have as a constitution now is actually debatable and that is what has brought under Nigerian government to think about constitutional review. Now, that's the topic we want to talk about this morning. What Nigerians want from the Senate Zonal Public Hearings? And this morning, we have none other than Simon Wafor Isorfora, who is a barrister and a public affairs analyst.
Good morning, all our viewers. Good morning, Dan Ambras and all people who can see us from different areas of the nation.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Now, quickly, barrister, I'm even glad that you came here with a copy of the Nigerian constitution as amended, that's talking about 1999 constitution. It's no longer news, to say the least, even a child in primary school knows that the Nigerian constitution needs serious review. Let's begin from there. What brought about this agitation for Nigeria to actually, you know, have the constitution as amended reviewed?
Thank you very much. In the first place, Nigeria needs a review of the constitution because long time ago, people have been agitating that the constitution should be reviewed because they... there are different areas or segment of the constitution. First of all, the constitution was handed over to us by the military. It was...
Keep talking.
In the actual sense, it wasn't a constitution drawn by the civilians. It was a constitution drawn by the military government and it is shaped in a way to suit the particular purpose, the those in authority that time. There are so many areas that need to be touched or to be changed. In short, some people are even glamoring for complete change of the constitution, to draw up a new constitution that will suit the present circumstance. But when that is not done, a good constitution review can help. We know that we have had that in these different times, like when Ike Kuremado was the deputy president of Senate. I was even in the UNISIC auditorium when he came and that was analyzed and so on and so forth. And there's so many other, the eight Senate, the nine Senate, and going down the leg, we have had constitution reviews. So if this ten Senate can do well to touch on those areas that need to be changed or to be brought up today to suit the present circumstance in the nation, that will be a nice thing. Thank you.
Yes, you've touched that. Otherwise, some people were saying that Nigeria is being run like a nation without constitution. And some other analysts would tell you that, do we actually have constitution? Okay, when nobody, you don't know who gathered to put up a script and say that this is the constitution guide in a country. Okay, okay, now we have it. Why is it that a whole lot of things happen in this country or some leaders that will come up and jettison the constitution perhaps, you know, doing things the way they want to do it? That was what necessitated the conversation that we don't have a constitution. Otherwise, there are so many things that have been, the politicians of this country have done that is outside the constitution of this Nigeria and nobody is calling anybody to order. Why do you think it's so?
Yes, it is so because the draftsman may have good intention in putting certain things in the constitution. But the operators of the constitution are, you know, we used to say in law that the law is what the court says that it is the law. Because it is the court that we interpret what is the real intention of the draftsman who drafted the law or the constitution. Now, another thing is, some of, some people who are the system that we exist in, people have devised a maze of changing or adding sharp practice to whatever is written. And then, and so many people are, because the system, people are product of the system or the environment they grow in. So, so many people are not used to obeying in a nutshell. We don't have strong institutions. Because if we have strong institutions, there are people who are responsible, who ought to know that the constitution or the laws are obeyed to the letter.
Talking about having strong institutions, are the institutions for man or man for the institutions?
Yes, the institutions are for the man, that is...
Because the institutions were actually created by man to guide man. So when you say that we don't have strong institutions, it's more like making it seem as if the constitution as a guide is more like a paper without any power or guidance or authority.
And that, to a larger extent, that is what it is. You have nations who don't even have written constitution, but they operate very well because they have strong, written constitution, but they have, because they have strong institution. Whatever is supposed to be the ethics, the value of the system, whenever you go contrary to it, you will be brought to book, you will, you will be answerable, you will be accountable to whatever you are doing. And people are even conscious of that. You will be done not because you know the consequences. But in our own, we have written constitution, we have a constitution we amended, this is even this one now, is you have up to one, first to fifth alteration. Apart from the 1999, you have up to first to fifth alteration of the constitution. Apart from the previous constitutional reviews as well. Even this ones, they are going now, it is good. But I pray we have more time that they will go to the ruler, because when you come to geopolitical zone, you just mount one, one day, also they sit at a conference hall in Enugu or one, who, those people, people like us.
Yeah, before we get to the regional affair that we are cut out for now, let's look at some, the review that has been made on this constitution, 1999 constitution, like you say, we have had up to five...
Alterations.
Alterations, okay. What and what were they looking for? What and what we are reviewed? And are all those additions being obeyed? Let's now put it side by side with what we see in electoral reforms, okay? Whereby they say, let us reform our electoral system so that we'll have this, we'll have that, we'll have that, to be able to, I mean, produce better result in elections and every other thing. But at the end of the day, you find out that those things are not implemented. So is it just, you know, proclaiming our, what they call policies without implementation? Otherwise, what have you achieved from the amendments you have made from this 1999 constitution?
Thank you very much. That is what I wanted, as when you said the alteration, I said, for instance, one of the, what, one of the things that necessitated the alteration was the, I have amendment to the electoral system. But as you pointed out, it is even one of the things I listed that people should expect from the constitutional review. They, we used to say, it is a saying that he who pays the piper dictates the tune. Another saying says, the power to hire is the power to fire. So if we are serious, it's one of the things I listed that people should expect, whether the Nigerians are expect, if we should expect to have a very strong institution like the electoral system, I noted it here, the appointment of the chairman of INEC and the commissioners, resident commissioners ought to be reviewed. Why? The other day, we had that a notorious, a woman that is very known for being in political, in partisan politics, was about to be appointed to be the resident electoral commissioner for Delta State or so. How do you think? How on earth do you think? It's one of the things I put, the second thing is appointment of judicial officers, judicial, you know, independence of the financial, autonomy of financial, judicial autonomy. Now, look at it, if you have, somebody will appoint you as a judicial officer, as a president, president of customary court of appeal, as the, the Chief Justice of Nigeria, then tomorrow, I will bring a case against the same person that appointed you.
What is this?
And you will be there. And mind you, I've said that we don't have strong institutions, because if it were to be nations where you have, even if you, the person, so far, the person will live to the oath you have taken, that is serving the nation.
And not serving man. But let us get it from the constitution. We have three arms of government, the executive, the legislature, and the judiciary.
Yes.
So how come the constitution now mandated executive to be appointing judiciary and legislative? Is it what is written in the constitution? Otherwise, who allowed this?
It is a, and they look at it, actually, it is not absolute. Because if you look at section two, three, one of the constitution says, section two, three, one of the constitution, it says that the, that the president will appoint the Chief Justice of Nigeria on the recommendation. These are the things that are attached, but why am I saying it? These things are not followed and are not obeyed. Look at it. The appointment of a person to the office of the Chief Justice of Nigeria shall be made by the president on the recommendation of the National Judicial Council, subject to the confirmation of their, of such appointment by the Senate. Then if you go to section two, three, eight, it says, the appointment of a person to the office of the president of the Court of Appeal shall be made by the president on the recommendation of the National Judicial Council, subject to the confirmation of such appointment by the Senate. So the president, the Chief Justice of Nigeria, all the Supreme Court judges, justices, then the president of the Court of Appeal will be appointed by the president on the recommendation of the judicial, national judiciary. But you know, it's...
Nobody has deemed it necessary to look at that aspect since we started reviewing this constitution to the tune of five revisions. And nobody from judiciary or national assembly has thought it wise for them to review that aspect.
Even now...
Why they don't give a total part to the executive?
Even now, do you think that it is possible for them, do you think that they are going to? We are just saying, that is it. Even the INEC, how do you think now that somebody will, even without even this appointment, the other day, that is why I noted also, independent judicial autonomy and especially financial autonomy. Now, the other day, we, the minister for the Federal Capital Territory, built houses for the judges in F City, gave them cars, you know, the Jeep, the high class one. Some governors do it. Then how do you think now that I have a case?
You get a case with me too.
And I come, we can come before the judge who's sitting there. The other day, he appointed the president of the Court of Appeal to be the chairman of this club in F City.
You guys don't have a...
Now, now, talking about these areas, let's look into key areas where we think as Nigerians, as citizens of this country, the constitutional review should actually throw more weight on. And key to that is security, security architecture. We need to review the constitution of the Nigerian, you know, the Nigerian constitution and this power, this excessive power that the police, the army and the rest of it, even the president having the chief, the commander in chief of armed forces, that is one. Also, local government autonomy, if we are truly practicing...
Federalism.
Federalism, democracy in the true sense of it, why wouldn't local government have, you know, seamless autonomy, judicial reforms like we've, we've talked about now? These are the bedrock or, let's say, the hope for the common man. The hope for the common man in the sense that when you know that you have heard or somebody takes you to court, you're believing that justice is blind and that with due diligence, the truth will definitely come out. And not last but the least, but the most important electoral reforms. Barrister, can you please wrap up all of these things so that when we have this, our constitutional review, this should make the top point agenda? Because without these four issues, we're definitely just rigmarole and deceiving ourselves in trying to have a true democracy in this part of the world.
Now, they, you captured it. The, what I want you to understand is that, for instance, I noted it, state police, it has been debated for a long time. Actually, the president will be the commander in chief. And then, but as I told you, in situations, in states, in climes where you have strong institutions, after all, the president of America, Donald Trump, had a case, he was... the, some presidents are sitting, past, limited past president, the son was tried, the son had a case. So when you have strong institutions...
In Africa, yeah, Zuma went to prison.
Ah, hey, that is the point. Zuma went to prison. So, where, because South Africa was going, you know, they were throwing the path of the civilized war. So, even when a sitting president is sitting, they can try him because, but here, our, they have immunity that covers them and nobody is quarreling with that. But we need to have checks and balances.
The idea of having immunity, is it actually meant to be? Because they say that vacuum shouldn't be, you understand, nature abhors vacuum. But if the president, the governor, the senator is found lacking, incompetent in the discharge of his duty, don't you think the executive can actualize his, you know, impeachment and removal from office?
That is, that's where I was waiting for you. You know, the point is, the, or in the opinion of the draftsman, because they made it that in order not to distract the chief executive from, you know, pursuing the responsibility, the duties of the office. But there are supposed to be checks and balances, that is why you have impeachment and so on and so. If we have strong regulator, they can always check the executive, they have a free phone shop, they can, and we are, whenever a misconduct is found, there is room for the executive to be impeached. But you will see that most of them, most of the times that they have attempted impeaching is where you don't carry heavy Ghana Mosgo bag, that where you don't distribute, where you don't share, then that is where you will be threatened. But as long as you are sharing, then they will come openly to say that whatever the chief executive says, we will approve it.
Will be endorsed.
They are not hiding it.
Okay, well, we'll still come back and discuss further on this issue of the constitution amendment. Don't go anywhere. Let's go and feel the pulse of our street parliamentarians. The show continues after this short break.
Actually, I have been... The present Nigerian constitution is obsolete and outdated. It is, is long overdue for amendment or rather review. Because personally, if we have to look into that constitution, there is need to review that constitution concerning, there should be a reflection of the six geopolitical zones as is concerning the presidency of this country. There should be a shrine to this constitution that the six geopolitical zones, the presidency should rotate among the six geopolitical zones so that you give every part of the country a sense of belonging. So that it's not a question of the winners take it all. It should rotate around the six geopolitical zones. We are not taking into consideration either tribe or religion, should not be reflected. So it is, let every part of this country participate. If you look at what is happening, it is being done now on the north and south, which if you look at, the south, the north has taken a lion's share.
What we need in this country is the, for the youth to wake up. This is what we need. Everybody is scared to die. And when you're scared to die, nothing's going to happen in this country. Do you understand what I mean? Nobody want to die. This is the main thing. When we remove religion, tribes and other things, this is when the country will work together. But for now, this country cannot work. What I used to hear before is Ibo Ause Yoroba. It's not as if other countries and other tribes are not existing. You go to Lagos, you see the statue, Ibo Ause Yoroba. These people just came in, they brought them, everybody knows how they came into this country and they are covering all your bush to take care of you, they want to come to you and people are backing them up. They know, everybody knows, they are backing them up because they are benefiting from here. The oil we have here, we are not eating from it. It's these people that are controlling your oil. N M P C, other this country, other these companies, they are here to secure what they need, not for you, they are not pitying you. If you cry from now till tomorrow, it's only the youth who wake up. The election is not what you vote. This election, they rig it, everybody knows. But you cannot do something because people are scared to die and people knows that this is not going well. Instead of them to stand up to say that, but they think of what they are benefiting. So when you are benefiting, you are not thinking about your, your generations. People coming up, you are not thinking about suffering and things. No good hospital, no good road, no security, no, how many people have been killed in Benew State? Nobody's saying anything and they knows what is going on. So how can your country get better?
If only what China did in their country could be applied in this country, it would be very, very okay. That anyone that is caught stealing public fund should be sentenced to death by hanging. That is one particular bill or constitutional review, I know that when it is done, Nigeria will be better.
You ask if Nigerians are actually, the leaders of Nigerians are actually Nigerians because I don't know if there is a pedestal where they see what's happening here and choose not to do anything. We've heard it from our street parliamentarians, one even suggesting death penalty for investment and corrupt politicians and the rest of it. Well, that can be enshrined in the constitution, but like our guest said here, that we can have a strong institution that works and that's what we need. And now, that brings me to my next question. As much as we need the constitution to guide us and to make us live like civil minded people, then what about the individuals too? Because the individual, I believe in this part of the world, needs certain form of reorientation. We need to reorientate ourselves. If you don't reorientate yourself, no matter the laudable transformation that is in that constitution, Nigerians definitely won't obey it. What, is there any rule for reorientation of Nigerians in this agitation for constitutional review or is it just going to be, let's just, you know, include some of these things that we want and then let's keep going?
Thank you very much. You are on the right track. You know, that is why we had the National Orientation Agency. Okay. And during, I remember during the time of Dora Akunere, she came up with a rebranding Nigeria. But look at it, the problem is, they say, when the source of the water is bad, definitely it will be difficult for you to get a clean water from the bottom. These, if the leaders, if the leaders are honest and genuinely pursuing, you know, this thing, they are, they will set examples, then every other person will be, will be willing to beg. For instance, they, we had a leader who said that even the system that brought me up was not transparent. Do you think that that man is honest, he will, he, and he desired, he followed it up, that there must be change? Is this not the INEC we are talking now? He followed it up, if he had lived, he knew, he confessed that it was not, you know, this thing credible. Then, another leader came up and said that my ambition to rule, to be, is, does not what the death or blood of every Nigerian, is that I am willing, I am willing to relinquish power instead of people to shed blood. And he, he was, he quietly stepped down. But there are people who will do it by, by, by all means, it is my turn and so on and so forth. So what I'm saying is, those people now going, if you go deep in their mind, many of them are just to fulfill righteousness, that we have done constitution, they will go there and blow grammar, eat the money, serve themselves and go.
Yeah, actually, that's where my next person is coming from. Now, we are looking at some constitutional review and, what do you call it, the Zonal meetings for this constitution?
Conferences.
Okay, constitutional review, what Nigerians want from the Senate Zonal Public Hearings? Okay, what does that mean? What are we expecting? When they say zone, are they going to move from, from state to state or everybody if you are from Imo, Anambra, Eboni, Enugu and Abia? Everybody who converge at a particular place or would they move, you know, to hear from the people what they want?
That is a problem. And the, what, the arrangement is that there are just six geopolitical zones. So as we are now in the southeast, they will just gather one day or so in a, in a conference hall. Then this, people will speak, give this and that, and then after they entertain themselves and go, they have done constitutional review and those things we noted. And just like someone...
Who are going to be the representative, who and who are expected to be there, you know, like...
To be your mouthpiece.
Yeah, they are to be the mouthpiece.
That is the point. You know, in a, in a real democracy, there are people that are, for instance, you know, civil liberties organization, members of A U J, teachers' union, market traders. And that is why I said, in the actual sense, it's supposed to be, if not for any other, it's supposed to be each state. They can, but when you, but who will now, do you think that a man in main market will allow himself? Because when he gets there, who will recognize him? Who will give him audience?
Can't, can't, can't we go under the umbrella of an organization? You understand? We have different organizations in this country, you understand? So can't organizations have like three or four people? But before then, as members of such organization, you would have collated your input, that is what I'm telling...
All the market, all the women in Anambra State come together, what do you expect? Look at what they ask us to look at, what do I go with? And then they will deliberate and come about all the civil liberty organizations, then they...
Human rights organizations.
The human rights workers.
Market women.
Exactly, so many, students too now, students, now, now.
So how are you guys planning this? Are you, is it going to be what Simon said, you just want to gather, eat and drink and then blow grammar and go? So what are, what are you going to present when you get back to Abuja that this is what you got from your zone? Because I don't know what you're planning anyway.
Just then, this is, they just write something that, because what they are saying is, these are things are supposed to, this is the way it's supposed to be. And there, nobody, and I don't think they will close door about this. But you ought to have given people pre-information, this is what is expected, so that even give them the data, the, the agenda of what, then they will prepare, they gather themselves and then come up with, and I, you know, and then come and present it there.
It's the same problem of few people getting together, put up something and then brought it out as the national...
That is the point.
National constitution, that's what has been going on. Apart from the review that, which was, what was then, who participated, that's, okay...
Is it the national confab?
Eh, that was good, okay. But what, even what the outcome of that one was not implemented.
That's the point.
No, no, we are still, good luck, Jonathan, at some point said they were, they were going to revisit that Orasanya report to see the areas that they can enshrine, adopt and then enshrine into the constitution.
You were still looking at it.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, but there's time, time, time ran out.
Which time ran out? He had how many years before he left? Forget that thing, it's a system, nobody wants to do anything.
The truth behind it is...
The things you are asking them to do will go against them when they want to come to election.
The truth is that good luck was not so bold, courageous to see that, you know?
And he was threatening.
That's what I'm telling you now, he was not so...
He wanted to keep his position as the president, come next election, so he never wanted to offend anybody.
They believe that there are people who own the nation.
Or to stop being selfish. Or to stop being selfish in this country, we won't get it.
But that is what leadership entails, leadership is selfless. You can be a leader and all you think about is yourself and your cronies, like we've had in, in previous and present time. We don't, that's not leadership. Leadership is all about having the persons, the people that you know will take, if you don't have it as a president, nothing stops you from looking around, getting those people that will make...
They don't look after them, they look at the present, nobody looks at the future, that's why nobody wants to do anything.
Now, still talking about our constitutional review, quickly, a nice, a nice one, I mean, a one, a quick one. The Nigeria, they say, is sitting on three legs, it's like a table that is on three legs and this three-legged table is meant to be balanced on a fourth leg. There are agitations that enough of this Awaso Ibo Yoruba nomenclature, that Nigeria now needs other ethnic groups, you understand, to come to the table. Has there been any thought of even making it no longer Awaso Ibo faction Yoruba, but to just make it a Nigerian entity and let's kill all this issue of ethnicity, tribalism and religion? A quick talk on that.
No, you know, why we have this six geopoliticals, it was a poor matter that they came up with it and even he was fought, they, they, we are not happy when he, because to reach the, the other, the minorities, the other this thing, so that, and then power will be distributed.
Power will be distributed, but he's bringing about incompetence and mediocrity. If you go on this rotational issue, you, you keep bringing people that are not fit to be in the corridor of power, just because we're talking about, I mean, rotation. Don't we think we need to talk about one mind, a, a nationalistic movement where irrespective of your tribe, irrespective of your religion, if you're fit to do the job, we give it to you? Shouldn't that be discussed in the constitutional review?
That is what, even if it is discussed, do you think it is possible for it to be implemented? What they are saying is the ideal thing, but what do you, do you see Nigeria of today? Why do we have, which every chief executive will appoint, the, the service chiefs, this, the people from his side, the people he trust? It is not about the good of Nigeria.
Thank you so much, I think on that note we'll say, let's be, you know, let's be hopeful that the Nigeria that we all dream of, that we all crave for, that we all clam for will definitely make manifest and may God keep us alive to witness that. We want to thank you so much for availing yourself the opportunity to be with us this morning to talk about the constitutional review, talking about what Nigerians want from the state and zonal area, talking about Simon Wafu, is a former Esquire, our public affairs analyst, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, thank you our viewers. Let us continue to hope that one day there will be people who will rise to possess our nation back.
Thank you.
Well, it's really good to like have that hope, I still have it, it's like a glimmer of hope, but it's there in me. And that I will be moving up to the next segment this morning and that catch the bus. Let's see what we have for you.